Is now adjourned, I'd like to call the order, the April eighth, twenty twenty-one Jefferson County Commission Meeting at nine oh eight. Uh, Ms. Di Liberto, would you please call the row?
Commissioner Ammons.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Tyson.
Good morning.
Commissioner Stevens.
I am here. Our Commissioner Scales staff said that she was not going to be able to be here today.
She's in the courthouse.
She's in the courthouse now, is she coming?
Yes.
Okay, so she will be here then. Uh, with that being said, we have an invocation by District Two and a pledge allegiance by Danielle. Okay.
Gentlemen, Father, we come together this morning asking for your guidance, praying for Jefferson County, praying for those families that have suffered and those businesses that have suffered because of COVID-19. We're also praying for those families that have suffered greatly because of the tornadoes that have hit Jefferson County in the last three months. Lord, we know that hard times are just those things that we as your people are going to have to endure. But, Lord, we know that on the other side, there will be sunlight. The sun will come again, light will shine, and your good people will be able to repair, replace, and build upon the many blessings that are still in store. Lord, these and many more blessings, we ask in our son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, slave pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good will, with every right and justice for all.
Thank both of you so very much.
We have a presentation, Commissioner Knight, I'll turn the floor over to you for it.
Hello, gentlemen. I'd like to thank them, welcome. Mayor of Pinson, Joe Cochran, Coach Sam Shade, Penston Valley High School, and Principal Michael Turner of Penston Valley High School. And we are presenting them with a resolution today. And this resolution reads, whereas it gives us, Jefferson County Commission, great pleasure and recognition achievements by those who have impacted our community for the better. And whereas the Penston Valley High School Indians claim their third six A state championship in four years, December fourth, twenty twenty, at Bryant-Denny Stadium in Tuscaloosa. Whereas the never quit Penston Valley Indians defeated the Spanish portero twenty-three thirteen, in a come-from-behind victory in the fourth quarter. And whereas by their performance, the players and coaches have brought special recognition to Jefferson County, Alabama, not only for their athletic abilities, but for their dedication to high standards of discipline and devotion, which inspires all students to accomplish their goals. And whereas some of these young men will continue their studies and football career at the collegiate level. I'm not going to go through all the names, but one of them is the famous Jaquency McKinstry, Kinistry, AKA Kool-Aid, who will be going to the University of Alabama. Kenjay Christian, Virginia Tech, Rayvon Crum, North Texas. And we're going to Troy, Southern University, Southern Illinois University, Faulkner University, Faulkner University, Wisconsin Lutheran College, Hutchinson Community College, Wisconsin Lutheran College, University of the Cumberland, West Florida University, and Jacksonville State University, all on scholarships for this people, these teams. Whereas in every helmet of this championship team, there's a special person who will be a champion forever. And whereas these young men, led by Coach Sam Shade, gave back to the community. And as a, as a team pitched in as volunteers to help their fellow men in the post-tornado cleanup near their community. And whereas in a year of day-to-day struggles with the unknown of COVID-19, Coach Shade and his entire staff are to be commended for their hard work, patience, and skill in leading the Penston Valley Indians to another championship despite these trying times. Now therefore be it resolved, Commissioner Joe Knight and the Jefferson County Commission does hereby congratulate the twenty-twenty Penston Valley High School Football Team as champion. This. This. Three championships in four years. And they were two different coaches, so that tells you a lot about these kids. Unmasked. 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 And I want to say a special thanking to this gentleman right here, he's a principal out there who is looked up to and respected by these kids, and he's done an awesome job, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Josh, appreciate it.
Y'all have a, have a tournament mic here.
I'll start first by saying, first and foremost, good morning, and thank you for having us, all the commissioners, you guys do. I know you're here to honor us, but I just want to thank you guys for what you do for this, this wonderful county. Uh, it's a lot of hard work, a lot going on, especially in schools with COVID and so, so forth and so on that, uh, it's just a miracle that we're able to actually have school in a traditional manner, and we hope. I was at a principal's athletic conference on, yesterday, uh, and our state superintendent, Dr. Mackey spoke in addition to Mr. Savary issues over the athletics for the state. And that's the thing that we just all are so hopeful for is when school starts in August, that we can start in a traditional manner, and that hopefully this COVID-19 thing will be behind us enough to wherein which our students can return one hundred percent, and we can go on about the business. As you know, having these kids in a school building is a lot more impactful and engaging than them looking, uh, on a computer monitor and trying to gain and glean, obviously, the information being disseminated by our educators. So with that being said, I just want to thank you guys for what you've done. Obviously, Coach Shade is a remarkable, remarkable human being, uh, and a wonderful coach for our kids. And so when Coach Patrick Nix, who's an Auburn guy, left, I said, well, Auburn walked out the door on me, and, and, and no pun intended, I love Coach Nix, but I said, I gotta go get Alabama guy, right? I mean, right, it just stands the reason. And so needless to say, we wanted to make sure that we provided all the supports and resources for him and our students. Uh, and, and really, you know, like I know, sports are great, and we all love watching and supporting sports. But sports really, uh, for us at Penston Valley High School is a vehicle to try to teach young men and young women, uh, a lot about life's experiences, about working together collaboratively, and working through struggles, and working through differences, right? And so for us, that's what we try to do, and we try to mirror that. And our students are ambassadors, and they're servant leaders, and we absolutely love the fact when we had the tragedy with the tornadoes, that they were just, what we had to do is pick up the phone, and Coach said, we're going to have them there, and our kids showed up in numbers and masses, and they went to do the heavy lifting and doing the work, uh, that was required. So, uh, I could talk forever, I won't, I'm going to turn it over, uh, and our mayor likes to talk too, by the way. But I'm going to turn it over to Coach Shade, and again, I just want to thank you guys. I just want to thank you all for, uh, having us and recognizing, myself, Principal Turner, our mayor, Joe Cochran, and, uh, just the entire Penston Valley, uh, family. This year was a very, uh, very trying year. I, I told, uh, I told a friend of mine, and I'm probably going to write a book about it, just, you know, all the ups, all the ups and downs, and, uh, you know, from having to shut down for a week or two because of, uh, you know, COVID, and all, all the protocols that we had to deal with each and every day. And, uh, one of the things that I'm thankful for, I always talk to my principal, uh, Principal Turner, he, you know, he was a great leader for us in the school, but I want to thank all of you for your leadership, throughout this county, which I, I grew up in Jefferson County, I'm a, you know, I was born and raised here, so I want to thank you all for your leadership, and I just want to say that we really appreciate the recognition. And I'm going to turn it over to, uh, our mayor, Joe Cochran, Mayor of Penston.
Thank you, Sam, uh, Mike. Joe, the entire commission, we appreciate what you guys are doing. Me being a mayor and having been a city councilman for twelve years, I know how difficult it is to do the job you guys are doing, uh, especially in the times of COVID. And watching these gentlemen do the job they have to do with the school, with all the COVID stuff, coaching the football team, uh, actually being an active participant with the program as well over the years. I, I have the good fortune of being the announcer for the Indians, and travel with them to all their away games and do statistics and things like that. It's amazing to see how this team, over the years, came together. Because the first of the year, we had a brand-new coach, and it took a while for these kids to gel and to buy into what this guy's selling. He's selling good stuff, he's selling how to be a young man, how to be a leader, how to be a future dad, a future husband, a future commissioner, if you will. So, we appreciate everything that Sam brought to the table. I've often said so many times to people that I engage with around the state, that we have the greatest principle in the state about Alabama. I truly believe that, there's no doubt in my mind, it's a, it's a mentality of helping young people. But we appreciate you guys honoring them today, I appreciate you asking me to be here, uh, more than I can say. Obviously, I'm in Penston dealing with the things we deal with. What's the number one issue on the board right now, guys? Probably trash, right? That's, that's the thing we deal with. So having occasions of this nature where we're able to come together and celebrate something wonderful for young men and our community is, is the good stuff. So I appreciate you guys having us here today, and thank you again for what you do in our communities.
I've got to hold on to say, because I just want to tell a little bit more about what these kids were doing after that tornado. Uh, there's a little Latin, uh, community, predominantly Latin, Latino community, it's called Russ, the Mobile Home Park. And, and I was out one day, and there was the team, there was a coach, they were hauling this debris out to the side of the road. And, and it was very inspiring, because it was cold, it was misty, raining, apparently it worked just over and over. They didn't, they didn't fall through, and I mean that debris, all went from here to there, and then Cal had to go pick it up. But, but I, I just, I just, that, that just told me something that, that, look, there's, not only are they football champions, but they're championed by their leadership, and that's you guys, and we really appreciate that. Now Joe and I was out there, Mayor and I was out there, and that's not even in his city limits, but he was out there, and a lot of those kids go to your school. And so Joe and I were making rants, and we were talking to people, and those young kids, the school kids, they didn't know Mayor Cochran, but they knew they had been to those football games. And when he told him, well, I'm the announcer, they go, oh, we know, good. So Joe's a hero out there in that, in that community. So if y'all would join me up with all the commissioners, then we could take one more picture, please.
Hey, Joe, before, sir, Mr. Principal. Over here.
How you doing, Miss Scales? I, I remember last time you went, I took a picture out here, when you guys were presenting us with the litter quitters, uh, award, and so we're back again.
Exactly. Listen, before you all come up, I just wanted to say, um, Principal, you really make me proud. I adopted ten schools before I got into politics. And, uh, keep the passion. Your children are going to be successful because it exudes through the, the leadership. If the children don't feel excited, that's a problem, not necessarily with just the students and the parents. It boils down to me, uh, the leadership of the school. And when you were talking, I said, that's, that's what, that's, that's where it is. You've got to be passionate, you've got to be, um, present in the moment. That's what our children need, they need people who are present in the moment. And I cannot say enough for you, Coach, because you're teaching them life skills. You know, like I tell my children, when you graduate from high school, you graduate from school, period, but particularly in high school, no one is waking you up to go do your job, nobody's going to make you go to class. You're going to have to get up and do it on your own. And more importantly, you're teaching, the both of you, you're teaching children how to give back. That's what it's really all about. And I think a lot of times when, you know, people approach us, and they see us as elected officials only, the children don't get the benefit of knowing what it is to plant seeds, and you know what I mean when I say plant seeds. And, and, and the harvest comes in their life, or in their lifetime, when they realize that, hey, I remember when we went out there and cleaned up that tornado debris. I remember certain things, and, and I learned something. That's something that's going to stick with them for life. And Mayor, I don't know you personally, all I can tell you is that continue on, um, to back your students. You, you're looking for a good city, you're going to have to have, uh, people involved on every level of government. So don't want to say anything more about that, but thank you for coming with them this morning. Uh, and I just can't say enough, Principal, you excite me. If I could get a hundred of you, that would be A-OK, uh, because that's what we need. So I just wanted to say that before you came up and took your picture.
Thank you for your kind words.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I wanted, I wanted to say just one thing, I know that, um, my niece graduated from Penston Valley. She was the first African-American, Miss Cheerleader at the competition that they go to, Erica, I meant, uh, Danielle Gardner's.
I want to be Danielle Gardner, that's the only one left, and all of her family.
Yeah, that's, that's my niece, and, yeah, yeah. And, uh, she, uh, is at Alabama State getting ready to graduate. She, uh, top of the dean list, so I know what the school can do and what it done for her. And I wanted to give the basketball team a thousand dollars, because I know you probably need some help with the rings or something like that. It's the football, the football team, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the foot, the foot, the football team, uh, a thousand dollars on their rings. So I'd be more than happy to do that, because I know you need some assistance.
Yeah, yeah, I'll come on up and get your picture, man.
You're going to have him pull on double duty, um, with the girls, with girls next year? Fly football.
That's right, that's right. Where you want them, Jeff?
You need to move the chair.
Mask yes, mask no.
You going to post this after five p.m. tomorrow?
I am, I'm. I have a bull shot.
Yes or no?
All right.
It is okay.
I guess we're good.
Congratulations. I look forward to seeing the girls program up here next year, too. Absolutely, that's, that's, uh, I think that's going to be exciting, exciting for the girls. I'm, so I'm a lacrosse guy, I mean, I coached, I was president of U L A, state, state organization. My daughter's going to Birmingham Southern to play lacrosse next year, so, um, if you ever need any...
You have another one? We have one more guest, and this young lady is from the Small Business Administration, and she is here in Fulton Dale, they are setting up a, a process by which these people who have been affected by the Pennsyl County tornado, could come in and, and get help. And I'm going to turn it over to her, or me, and, and that can perhaps... Well, it's filled. Anyway, welcome here, you know, thank you for coming and...
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioners, as well for having me, um, here. I know it's a short notice, but, um, just wanted to, first of all, introduce myself properly. My name is Liliana Chonet, I'm a public affairs specialist for the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Assistance. We usually are very well-known when we come on the ground with the famous agency FEMA, but, you know, this is an agency declaration, so we are here on the ground to help the survivors and people that they were affected by the tornado that onset on January twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth. And, um, the type of disaster assistance that we are offering is in the form of, uh, physical disaster loans and economic injury disaster assistance loans. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the loans in a minute, but first I want to make an introduction and let you know that everybody that works for SBA, for Office of Disaster Assistance, they have a commitment with their life to help people that they've been, you know, stressed by disasters, that they've been, like, um, turned down by insurance companies and, and everything else, and, and they don't know where to go to. When I go to a disaster, the first thing that I hear from the survivors is like, why weren't you here earlier? So, or, or what kind of assistance do you offer me? Don't talk to me about loans. And it's, it's very hard to pass that first, you know, reaction from people, because it's understandable, you know? It's, uh, they've been through, through very tough time, and they just want assistance right off the bat. They don't want to hear about the logistics, they don't want to hear about how about to do it. But, um, you know, once you get to know them, and you get to know the community, and you're welcomed so nicely in the community, from all the way from the top people, from the commissioners, from, you know, stakeholders, um, you understand that, you know, you have a purpose. So with that being said, I'm going to talk a little bit about, um, the type of disaster assistance, the loans, and then where we open, and, and how we are serving the people, and how they could apply for it, and where they could find those resources. The loans are, I think that they are the best of loans that there are in, in type of disaster assistance. First of all, they are offering to businesses that they suffered in the, you know, affected area, up to two million dollar loan, with a percentage, uh, starting at three percent, and a repayment of thirty years. I think that's a, I think that's a great loan, um, if you agree with me. And that's to repair and replace their machinery, their property, their losses in their business. Then, um, the homeowners that they actually have damages anywhere from their real estate, their roof, the, you know, interior, they lost, you know, their furniture, their goods, uh, they could get a loan up to two hundred thousand dollars, with an interest rate of only one point one-two-five percent, also repayment rate of thirty years. Also, there is a deferment in the first payment for twelve months, which is going to be even more extended because of COVID, probably. That's to be talked in a separate session. So it's a lot of details, but the excellent part is a lot of people that when I go in a disaster area, they said, oh, you're doing everything for businesses, or you're like just serving the business community, but what about us, we just rent, we don't even have a house. These disaster loans are also for renters, so people that they actually don't have a home, and they just rent a property. If they were in the disaster area, they could get a loan up to forty thousand dollars with the same interest rate of one point one-two-five percent. This is to replay their, uh, replace their goods, you know, like their furniture, their clothing, you know, even their automobile, okay? So with that being said, I'm going to come to my favorite subject, which is, um, the economic injury disaster assistance loans. The recovery process is not immediate, the recovery process is always like on long-term. People, they need help on long-term basis. Businesses in the area that they were affected, they could apply for what they call it an IDLE, an Economic Injury Disaster Assistance Loan, that's up to two million dollars, and with an interest rate of three percent. These loans are working, I apologize, like, um, like cash flow, like working capital. So let's say, for instance, you could not pay your staff, you could not pay, you know, uh, certain things, the rent, and this is all because of the disaster. If you could prove you were in the disaster area, you were in existence as a business before the disaster started, and that you have actually economic loss, you could apply for this loan. And it's a very simple process to apply for the loan, so I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But also what I want to talk about is, this loans, once they get approved, um, there is like, uh, twenty percent on top of the loan for mitigation. We are not thinking just for the moment, we are thinking for the future. So if another disaster occurred, hopefully, to not today, um, these loans, you always need to prepare in advance. So you need to prepare your business, your property, your home, your, uh, where you live, you need to prepare it for the future. These loans could be, on top of the, of the approved loan from SBA, it could be up to twenty percent for mitigation. You could use it for building a safe room, uh, you know, shutters, film on the windows, you know, everything that would prepare you for the future disaster. Now, um, I'm going to answer more questions at the end, if you have any about the loans, but I want to talk about how to apply. We came here in Alabama, uh, in Jefferson County, and we are in the city of Fulton Dale, at the Fulton Dale Library, and we opened yesterday, what they call it a D-LOC, which is a disaster, you know, loan operation center. This disaster loan operation center is open for all the survivors, for anybody that was involved in this disaster in January twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth. So it's not just Jefferson County. The adjacent counties, and I apologize that I'm going to read them, it's Bibb, Blount, San Clair, Shelby, Tuscaloosa, Walker, in Alabama. So all these adjacent counties, they could come if they were in the affected area, and they could apply for these type of loans. Yesterday, I spent most of my day answering questions to the media and being at the opening of the D-LOC, and at the same time, I met with the mayor of Fulton Dale, and they, um, with also some other mayors, I talked to them on the phone, and I explained to them the process, and told them that, we beg of them, all I could do is distribute this information, I could not make them come to the D-LOC, I could not make them apply. All I could do is tell you about this process, and tell you about these services, and about this, you know, assistance. And I am asking you to actually use your Facebook, your social media, use all the means that you have of communication with the people in the disaster areas. E M manager, anybody that could come to them and just tell them about this D-LOCK open and about the services and invite them to come over as long as we're gonna be on the ground. We don't know how long we're gonna be here. It all depends about how many people are gonna show up at the library. Yesterday we had twenty people and we thought it was a low number, but that's just the first day. Um, we are here Monday through Friday, you know, um, nine to six, and then this Saturday only, we're gonna be open from ten to two. So the loan process, you could just come with what kind of paperwork, anything that you would bring for a normal loan. So your identity, proof that you were in the disaster area, that you reside in the disaster area, proof of your losses. Maybe you should bring, you know, um, your record of the taxes for the past year, so you could prove, you know, that, you know, you filed taxes. And any financial information that you think that might be helpful for a disaster assistance loan. Uh, and when I say that, if you are a business, a P and L, or an inventory, show me how you actually have a, you know, a loss of income in that time. Um, and for, you know, homeowners and renters, give me a list of inventory of things that you actually lost or they were damaged, so we could go ahead and start the process. You could also apply, not just to the D-LOCK, you could apply online. You could go to our, you know, SBA.gov, secure website, and Disaster Assistance, it's gonna show each disaster, and this is gonna be under Alabama one-nine, uh, one-six-nine-one-three declaration. And you could just start the application online. It's a very simple process. I brought some brochures and some fact sheets with very detailed information about the loan and, and how you could, you know, apply. But also you could apply by mail and you send it to our, you know, center in Texas, and the application could be in the form of a paper, uh, filing. With that being said, uh, like every good thing, it has an end, and this disaster loans are not forever. They are with a limited amount of time, so the disaster assistance loan is only available till June first of this year, and the Economic Injury Disaster Assistance Loan, it's only gonna be available, um, through January third of the following year, twenty-twenty-two. Now, a lot of people are asking me, why are you here on, you know, in April when this started in January? It's a process. This whole thing is a process. They have to do the preliminary assess- assessments on the ground. And, um, you know, uh, then the governor had to sign, you know, the declaration, and we are here now on the ground. Uh, talks are in for another P A with FEMA that it's for the tornadoes in March. So there might be another declaration that's gonna come pretty soon, and it's gonna cover the area that was, you know, affected in March, in all the counties in March. Um, and that's about it, uh, what I could say about, um, you know, disaster assistance, and my mission here is to let everybody know. Starting from the survivors, media, county officials, stakeholders, congressional, everybody that was affected and they could, you know, distribute this information. And once, if my mission is completed correctly, then everybody that was affected would be helped, that they wanna be helped.
Let me ask you one question. What if somebody loses their documents in the storm? How would they then come to you and prove that, hey, look, I lost this, this is what I lost? What would you do in that instance?
Well, the documents that you could lose in a storm, it's, you know, um, they are replaceable. All documents are replaceable. I D is replaceable. Proof of identi- I mean, like any proof of identity, so your driver's license, it's replaceable, your passport or whatever you have as an identity. Uh, the proof of residence, even if you lost your D, you, that's at the country record, so you could just always get those documents. It's not, you don't need to wait for that. You could start the process, you could start the application, and then you could bring the additional documents or you could upload them in the system. The good thing about SBA and, uh, I would have to say, if I favor something about the COVID and, and this situation that was created nationwide, it's, we are more savvy, we are more computer savvy, we have turned all the things we used to do, paper-wise and in-person electronically. So now electronically, we could file an application electronically, but take advantage of the fact that the customer services are here on the ground. They are at the library, so they could answer questions, they could help you through the process and help, you know, people that they're not so electronically savvy. So documents, yes, sir, you could always replace. Your taxes, you could just file a forty-five oh sixty with the IRS and get your transcripts. It's not an issue. Um, everybody could get the documents.
So typically, good morning.
Good morning.
So typically, when you're talking about like your birth certificate or social security card, you typically have to have one document, uh, in order to, to verify or to show proof for what you're applying for? So let's just say in the event that you, you are a part of a disaster. Um, if you lose all of your documentation, then how do you, for lack of better words, um, how do you identify yourself if you don't have any document, supporting document, that helps you to be able to get one of your major identity proofs?
Yeah, I, uh, have a little bit of background in, in law, and so I could tell you that with three affidavits or if you're people in the community or the eldest or the pastor, you could prove that you've been there, that you are who you say you are. So it's, it's a, it's a process like anything else to apply for an ID.
So do you publish that, ma'am, so that, that members of the public, that in the event that they are in a disaster and they've lost everything? All document, all forms of documentation? Um, then, you know, just like we had the tornado a couple of weeks ago that was right there in my community. Thankfully, um, it went, it went, it skipped over my area. Unfortunately, it hit my neighbors. So when you have an instance where you lose everything, you're telling me that you can have affidavits to prove who you are uh, in order to be able to get that. But my question again is, how do you publish that? So that interested persons can be able to take advantage of what SBA is offering? I've had to get an SBA loan, that's why I'm asking.
Well, um.
For disaster purposes.
I could just tell you that the best way to do and to go about that is go to the D-LOCK center, talk to the customer service representatives we have there and let them tell you what is the best way to actually, um.
No, I don't think you understood my question. I said, how do you all publicize this, uh, this accessibility so that members of the public can be able to take advantage of what SBA is offering?
I see. Um, in that case, you know, it's like people that they lost everything, it would be, um, you know, usually we go to the E M managers. The E M managers, they have immediate contact with the fire department, with the people that they are in the affected area. But our way of communicating, it's through the mayors, the stakeholders, media, so elder media that's in there, and I don't know if you watched the media in the last couple of days in Jefferson County, 'cause I've been on TV for about five times, telling them about these loans and about, you know, opening the D-LOCK. So you, we're waiting for them to actually either look at the TV or listen to the radio or look in the newspaper or, you know, people talk in communities, and even if they don't, even if they lost everything, it's, for instance, I'm gonna touch the subject with the Hispanic community. I, uh, when I got on the ground, the first thing that I like to do is to actually go in the disaster area or just go and talk to people and just ask them face-to-face. Um, how, how was it, you know? Um, and, and usually people that, like you said, that they lost everything, and that was a Hispanic, uh, you know, young man that actually lost life in, in this tornado. Um, I talked to them in the community and I'm bilingual, actually I'm bilingual, but.
Oh, I can tell in your dialect. Yes.
Thank you. Um, so I talked to them and I just asked them, you know, um, don't be, first of all, I tell them, don't be afraid to come to the D-LOCK. Just bring whatever documents you have, okay? Uh, we are here to help, we're not here to, to, you know, kind of like, you know, uh, see about your identity and social security. But it's needed. It's for a disaster assistance loan, you would need to have at least a federal ID number.
No, I think you answered my question, which you all utilize media, uh, and I'm sure, I guess, any other platform, uh, possible, as well as you do in-person communication. That's what it sounds like. Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, and, and I can tell from your dialect, that's why I was listening to you very closely. Um, one last question is about credit. Uh, so how does SBA, um, factor in credit as relates to, uh, possible loans for those persons who are in need of, uh, disaster monies?
Well, the federal law, it, it makes us go through a process like every other loan. So we need to look at the banking industry and we need to look at the history of credit, uh, credibility, repayment, you know, capability, all these factors. But the excellent thing about the disaster loans with SBA is that we look upon a case individually and not as, as usually in the banking industry at the bank would, would go by. So let's say, for instance, somebody, um, had a little dent in the credit, or, you know, it, it was not a perfect, uh, history. But, you know, they could, they could talk to that person, they could see if things are improving, or if there is any way possible to help that person, they would. Um, however, the banking industry, it obliges us to go by certain criteria and certain rules. And when I say by, what I say by that is, uh, let's say, for instance, somebody would be definitely denied a disaster loan. One of the reasons it would be that it was a disaster loan that you had before and you didn't pay it. So if you didn't pay a federal loan, that would be a definite no for, you know.
So if you had to say a credit rating, and I don't wanna, um, prolong the meeting, but let's just say if, if, you know, you had a credit, um, issue, even though I was approved, uh, which my credibility is not the issue, it's just sometimes you, especially when you're talking about these trailer parks, um, some communities that, you know, definitely, um, need assistance, you know, get very little help from FEMA, um, uh, because I don't think the FEMA is designed to, to be able to, to get you back to where you were initially, um, uh, it's just to provide some assistance. So, uh, I wanted to know about the credit component, you know, kind of what the credit scores would typically look like. And people are tuning in to these meetings, and that's why, that, right now, you're actually speaking to the public as we speak, even though you're communicating with us as a commission. My second or follow-up question is about, uh, does, um, SBA allow waivers for collateral, or does collateral even factor in?
To answer your first question, um, we cannot deny credit based on the credit, uh, you know, uh, score. So that, we factor each case individually by the credit history, and that's determined by the SBA. And an officer, a loan officer will be able to determine that. I'm not a loan officer, but I can tell you that the criteria in general, it's lenient towards the borrower, but it has to go through a process that it, you know, entails credibility, repayment capability, and credit history. Those three factors that they have to be taken in consideration. I don't know if I answered your first question.
Well, I, I think you, and I can always just ask outside of here. Let me ask you something. Do you work for Tom Tote?
Sorry?
Do you work with Tom Tote? He's with the Small Business Administration.
Uh, uh, he is part of this team, yes.
Okay. I will tell Tom my thoughts concerning you this morning. I think you're very impressive. You, you're really trying to get as much information out there as you possibly can. I really, I really appreciate it.
Do you want me to answer your second question?
Yes, all, every question I ask is what I wanna know.
Well, your second question, if I, uh, do not mistake, it's about, you know, um.
Waivers.
The, every loan that's over twenty-five thousand dollars is considered to be an unsecured loan. And it does require to have, um, a collateral. So a waiver, I am not quite sure if a waiver would be the, the word that would be, you know, used, but in general, the loan officers at SBA that would look for any unsecured loan under twenty-five thousand dollars. Everything that's above twenty-five thousand dollars, it will need some collateral. And collateral could be anything. It could be real estate, could be, you know, assets, could be.
Well, my experience was just what you said. The, the federal government is interested in your repayment ability. And, and so, and when we speak of collateral, uh, your, your means of collateral is basically gotta, it gotta match what you're requesting from the federal government. That was my experience. If you did not have collateral that would be e- uh, equivalent, uh, to the amount of the loan, then probably your loan would be denied. Uh, so that was my experience, and, and again, things may have changed from twenty years ago or greater when we had a flooding that occurred over on the east side of Birmingham, but, uh, those are the things I wanna know. It can be a sidebar. The main thing is that if you don't mind, I give my chief of staff, uh, your card, um, I certainly would be interested in knowing, especially since we had devastation in Robup. Uh, we had some things that happened over there. Uh, very grateful to some folks at Red Cross for the things that they've been doing to try to assist. Uh, but all information that I can be able to give, uh, to constituents is a plus. So I thank Joe for bringing you this morning, uh, because it adds, and then you being a bilingual, uh, young lady doesn't hurt at all. I mean, I think that every part of, of, of Jefferson County needs to be communicated with, and thank you.
But your mission, just to be clear, is for the January twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth storm. There would be another, um, setup if, if, if you come for another storm that occurred subsequent to that, correct?
And they're working on that, you know, um, assessment on the ground, and they, we are hoping to get it as quickly as possible, because a lot of people, when I talked yesterday with the mayors, every one of them, they asked me about, you know, I've not been affected by this tornado in January, but can we apply for the March, so.
Well, and I'm sure you can be able to give us some guidance in terms of, you know, this is what you're doing specific to this, uh, disaster. And so if you have future disasters to come, or if we've had one that I'm not addressing, meaning yourself, then you'll be able to give us some type of, uh, contact or whatever that is, so that members of the public can be able to have access to it. Am I correct?
Would you, would you remain after the meeting to perhaps answer some of these specific questions?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you very much. We certainly do appreciate that.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I was done.
Yeah, we're good. Uh, Commissioner, we have thirty-nine resolutions that were properly vetted and considered in the, uh, uh, committee meetings of, uh, the day before yesterday. Is any of that, or particularly Commissioner Lake pull for separate consideration?
I move items one, two, thirty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that sounds good. Mr. Tellis. Good to see you. I am, you're, you're back early. I understand that you had a, a loss in the family for that. Please. We share our condolences. Mr. Lawson. So, so we're good. Uh, let's begin with District One.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, I, I do wanna say thank you, ma'am, for answering my questions. Um, I was telling the President I was just about finished anyway, but I always say there is no dumb question other than the one that you don't ask. So if any of us are really serious about letting our constituents know what we need for them to know, then we should ask you. We should assume. And being that this is, uh, this, this meeting is always, uh, public and people know about it, I think that they will really embrace, uh, your line of questionings. As a matter of fact, my questions were coming from members of the public, so that was the reason why I was asking you certain things, and I thank you, Mr. President, uh, for obliging me, uh, the opportunity to be able to get some of those questions answered that the public wanted to know, okay? So thank you so much. I also wanna say to us, uh, as a commission, um, I really appreciate the support. Uh, we are talking about, um, Mrs., uh, Ms., rather, Yarborough, uh, one of our own. Patton Park, obviously, is in my district, uh, was, uh, in the area at the time when that happened. Um, and so, uh, not only about condolences, I cannot stress enough that I came to.
stress enough that I came to this commission a while back, and I told you that there were some issues on the east side of Birmingham. And it's showing again, because I have another teenager that was killed this morning, before day in Inglewood, okay, which is also in my district, and also on Birmingham's east side. So, nevertheless, I am hoping that we get beyond the thrills of being political, and start being concerned about, about some things that I'm telling you, this is where I live, and it's, it's getting to be tough. That's just, to just be very candid with you. You have one homicide on Sunday, and then here we are before day this morning, which is Thursday before this meeting, and a young person is killed over there in Inglewood. So, I am hoping that the sheriff is listening to me, that we continuously ask for support and help for the east precinct. It's gotten out of control. And I'm not, you know, going to continue to play a little politics that's going on. But, at the end of the day, I want us to understand that it's, it's getting to be tough in a lot of places. And, and you're dealing with devastation of a storm, and then you come back, and then you got all of this other stuff. It's, it can be a bit overwhelming. So, nevertheless, I want to thank the commission always for the supportive things that we're trying to do, not only in District 1, but throughout this county. I know that the mask mandate is lifted by the governor on tomorrow, and, and I'm just asking for everyone to be safe. And again, I thank our county attorney, who has already asked me, as relates to the Crime Stoppers piece, on behalf of Commission 1. We did assist with $3,000 for the capture and apprehension of the person that is respons, persons that are responsible for Ms. Yarborough. But, I'm saying a special prayer, really, for all families that have been affected. And I'll say this, Mr. President, in closing. My family experienced this. I know what it is firsthand. A candle is, is great, but it's not going to heal. You got to have folk that's going to talk, and it's going to get, get these folks, and, and get this thing under control. My niece is a cold case. So, I'm just telling you that we just got to embrace this family the best we can. And I pray for all of our employees, and for their safety, and for their welfare. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Teles.
Good morning. It was two murders, really three, in, on Sunday. It was two in Bessemer. Kamisha Davis was one of them. Twenty, she was in her twenties. She was actually an intern at City Hall for several years. And she was in one of my programs. And she was killed in Bessemer, along with her sister's fiance. And Ms. Yarborough was a good friend of my daughters. They actually grew up together. My daughter was robbed yesterday in Eastwood, by Eastwood Mall at the service station, in the broad open daylight, 12 o'clock noon. It could have easily been my daughter. And we need to do something. It has gotten to the point where we can't go get gas in the daytime. We know we don't need to be out at night, but daylight, during lunch hour, and you know, you, you know traffic is heavy, and they still are, they still robbing people. And then they went up the street and robbed, two hours later, and robbed someone else. And one of them was caught. But, this could have really been, really bad. So, I want the commission to really look at, try to do something, because this is serious. And we need to do, we need to look at doing something about what's going on. We keep talking about it. And I have talked to you, President, about this several times. And this is an investment in the, in Jefferson County citizens. I don't care what part of town it happens in. Something need to be done. I want to thank Congresswoman Sewell for putting people over politics, when she voted to pass the American Rescue Plan, which gave Jefferson County over $127 million. I'm going to call out the cities in District 2. Lipscomb will receive $400,000. Brighton will receive $510,000. Birmingham will receive $148 million. Bessemer will receive 14, over 14 million. And at the press conference, she talked about, along on some conference calls, that I was able to get on, that the money would be here in 60 days. We do not have a formula for this, how the money would be spent, but it will come. Tony Patel had a chance to actually talk to her in detail, detail about the funding. She also talked about the infrastructure funding that will be coming down, and they will actually be voting on it in about 10 days. So, I want to make sure that we actually keep up with that, because we need the money, and the citizens in Jefferson County as a whole. And we need to make sure that we spend this money throughout Jefferson County. And I know we need it. I wanted to address the EMA and the health departments. They have already, they started the rides, they only started two days ago. They are only giving rides to citizens that's going through the EMA scheduling site. So, they actually have to call through that site in order to get the ride scheduled to the, the various shock clinics throughout Jefferson County. I know Judge French sent out a letter asking for the commissioners to extend the facial covering requirements in the county courthouse. I would like for Jefferson County commissioners to really consider that possibility of extending that, because even though we might have took the vaccine, there's a lot of people that work at the county courthouse have medical concerns that would prevent them from being around people. And you can easily be harmed just by walking to the elevator and passing by citizens. I actually, it was a citizen came upstairs. She was actually in a wheelchair, was an older lady. And she was looking for a department, but she could barely push her chair. And I assisted her in pushing her chair down the hall, knowing that that, she could have easily had the virus. So, it's citizens like this that we approach in this building every day, that this shouldn't be a party issue. This is a health concern that concerns every citizen that work in this courthouse. Now, I know once they get outside, they have to wear their mask. But, I want you to think enough of the people that we hired to work in here and protect, that we protecting them, that we protecting them. And if they don't want to wear the mask, they don't have to wear it. But, we should be required to wear this mask in this building, because we are facing the public of all different backgrounds, and all different illnesses. So, I want us to make sure that we consider that. I want, I left out two things, President, that the Birmingham school system would be receiving 1, 1, 1, 119 million dollars. Bessemer school system would be receiving over $14 million. The, the Je, the Jefferson County school system would be receiving over $69 million. A lot of this is not on the website, so you have to actually go to other site, Michael, that they can go to.
The city has put out a list of all the cities.
Of all the cities, where you can actually go and look at your city, and actually look into it. And I want to make sure that, that citizens understand, if they need a ride to the vaccine clinics, they have to call, and it has to go through EMA. That's what EMA is set up for. They are providing the rides. They will take them to their vaccination site, and they will take them back home. Safe environment, clean, safe buses. They are sanitized, they are six feet apart. And, like I told you just, and really, we only had it open two days, and we had 33 rides. And that was really only, really one day of taking rides. So, we know that the transportation is needed. And I will be going to a meeting tomorrow with Congresswoman Sewell. And I do have some questions that I know, our president told me to ask her about some money. And so, I will, if y'all have any questions that y'all would like for me to give her, I would be more than happy to, to just give those questions off. Thank you.
Which, which, well, I'll just follow up, Ms. Teles, which, which funds are, is the question is directed to Congresswoman Sewell? The questions on which Trump's money, the Rescue Act, because the Treasury guidelines hadn't come out on that.
I just said that they hadn't came out with a formula.
Right.
For that. And that was in my first statement.
So, then I'm sure that, Tony, your office will be contacted since I noticed that we did approve an agreement today to extend Wood O'Brien's participation with us. Is that in regards to the new money that we are, we are expected to receive? So, then at that point, you'll notify us, and let us know when the portion that the county is going to receive will be distributed, or how that will, will take, take place?
What's the Treasury did, guidance on how it's been a month?
Correct.
We'll, we'll get to work. But, we're, we're getting ready to set up to be able to handle this.
And I, I will say.
It'll be careful this time, because the CDs have their own money, but we don't have to support the CDs this time, like we did last time.
And, and, but basically, the guidelines is what I'm more interested in, because it doesn't matter how much money you receive. What matters is your ability to spend it. So, yeah, so I'll just stay tuned, and I'll listen up for that. Thank you.
Mr. Knight.
I just want to say thank you to my special guest that came in today, Principal Turner, Coach Shade, Mayor Cochran, and our very special guest, it was short notice, Ms. Liliana. You did a great job in, in spreading the information to us, so that we may also spread it further into the community. And just thank you for being here, and thank you for what you do. The, the question that people ask you, why are you just now getting here? There's a process that you, with FEMA, you have to be denied the individual assistance, and then we go through the public assistance phase with the thresholds and denials. And we could have appealed the denial of the individual assistance to people. Had we done that, then you guys would have been delayed another 30 to 60 days in, for your coming. So, we decided not to make that appeal, which we didn't think we could win anyway, so that you can go ahead and, and come in and, and offer your assistance. So, thank you so much for being here and sharing that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Amich.
After our discussion on Tuesday, I'm very appreciative of the county manager's office, and, and Amwaste, and the job that they've done in responding to constituent needs. And I hope that level of service continues. Very appreciative. On a, on a personal note for the commission, Tuesday night, my, my daughter committed to Birmingham Southern to play lacrosse. So, if you guys would like to come watch women's lacrosse at Birmingham Southern next year, I'd be happy to host you. We'll have, we'll have a good tailgate.
I'm for that.
That's right.
Well, they don't have lacrosse. That's okay. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. I would like to echo and elaborate on something that everyone said today, is that we are in a crisis. We are in a crisis that has compounded by a COVID outbreak, senseless violence cast upon our youth in all areas of Jefferson County. And we're also in a crisis concerning drug overdose. I believe that all of these together are going to require some drastic action. And I had a lengthy conversation with Dr. Mark Wilson, the Health Department, this morning, concerning what we should do, and the different options that we have available to us. And it's going to all begin with communication. We're going to have to communicate this crisis to our citizens. And we're going to have to raise our expectations of our youth, and their responsibility to their community, to their family, and to their neighbors. You have to have respect. And you have to respect the sanctity of life. Guys, this isn't a video game where you can hit reset. Once it's done, it's done, and lives are changed forever. And that needs to be communicated. And we, as a commission, city councils, throughout Jefferson County, need to expect more and demand more. More engagement from day one to get things done. And this commission, I know, is going to work beyond party lines to make sure that, that we remain engaged and get the proper things done for our, our citizens. Been a rough week.
Been a rough week.
Several overdoses, several senseless deaths. The one bright spot is that we may have begun to turn the corner on, on the COVID. And that is, that is, is the one bright thing that we have going for us right now. Let's continue to pray. Let's pray for intervention, and pray for guidance, and pray for healing of our citizens in Jefferson County.
And, and on that light, Mr. President, I concur with what Commissioner Scale said, that if she could have 100 Michael Turners as principals, as leaders out there, she would take them in a heartbeat. And that's exactly what you're saying, is that we need the leaders to step up.
We, we, we need to, to bring everyone together. Put our feet under the same table and speak from the same playbook.
We praise $8,500.
$8,500, that's great. And thank you, Commissioner Scales, for, for your contribution to that. With that being said, this commission meeting is recessed until further notice. With that being said, this commission meeting is recessed under further notice.